Glad to have everybody to stand. We're going to say the pledge allegiance and we have a prayer. But I'd like everybody to remember this being 9/11. This first long, you know what happened 17 years ago. I remember what I was doing. I was in a bank meeting going over past news and go in there and see that happen and then watch while they're watching that going and you say, no, the plane come in. It's just a horrible thing. And I know many, many people we have here had experienced some of the aftermath going to fight for us. Let's remember all those and as we go to prayer after we have a pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My gracious Father, we are thank you for the day that you've given to each of us. Lord, as already been said, we remember this day and tragedy that happened 17 years ago. Lord, we know that people still feel effects of that. Lives were changed forever. And Lord, we do pray for those who still need that touch from you. Pray, Lord, that you would grant it to them. Thank you, Lord, for those who put their lives in harm's way for us. Thank you for all who serve, whether it's military, whether it's firemen, whether it's policemen. Lord, we thank you for them doing what they do. We're grateful for this country and grateful for the privilege of living here and grateful to be living in Louisiana. I ask you, Lord, that you help us to make right decisions, give us a grace to always do what's best before we pray this in Jesus' name.
Amen.
I'd like to welcome everybody here. We'll start with a roll call from our clerk.
Board of Alderman, roll call for a regular public meeting dated September 11, 2018. Alderman Betts.
Present.
Alderman Doray.
Present.
Alderman Gardner. Alderman Gardner is noted to be absent. Alderman McCoy.
Present.
Alderman Probst.
Present.
Mayor Corum is present.
Okay. You have in front of you the minutes from previous meeting. If you've had a chance to look at those, I will entertain a motion to accept those.
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Alderman Doray. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Taken by Alderman Probst. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Number one item on our agenda is Ms. Deborah Moke, our CPA, is going to give us a financial report.
I'm going to be presenting the financial summary as of June 30, 2018. These are the final numbers that will be transmitted to the auditor to begin their audit on October 1st. These numbers changed from when the ones I presented to y'all by email yesterday. There was electric costs that was omitted from the report and then I discovered it today, so I had to go in and adjust my report. But the general fund shows year-to-date revenue of $2.6 million and the year-to-date fund expense was $9.1 for a net loss of $6.5. Transfers in and out shows a $280,000 negative change to the fund balance. The special revenue fund showed revenue of $17 million and it showed expenditures of a year-to-date of $11 million for a net change of $6.2 million. With transfers in and out, it left a negative $230,000 change in fund balance. The enterprise fund, which is your utility and your convention center, showed revenue of $12.6 million and expenses of $10 million for a net change with transfers in and out of a positive $1.4 million increase in the fund balance. The capital fund, which is your industrial park fund and your port road construction account, showed revenues of $3.4 million and expenditures of $3.4 for really a net change of $30,000. And the transfers in of $399,000 showed an increase in the fund balance of $429,000. And then you have your debt service, which showed expenses where we paid on the debt, $892,000. And we had transfers in to pay that debt of $1 million, so we have a net change in fund balance of $148,000. And the net change, combined net change in assets, all funds, is an increase of $1.463 million. And I've also provided the services and the breakdown of what that $1.463 was, what fund made up that amount. And then on the budget to actual comparison, the total combined, we're showing that we had actual expenditures of revenue of $35.8 million when we had budgeted for $39 million. That was a $3.4 million deficit and that was primarily due to the sale of the industrial park building, which didn't happen until July. And also your edulorm and your property taxes were down by $250,000. You also have your salaries and personal services that we budgeted for $10 million. We came in at $9.987, which is a positive variance of $147,000. We had materials and supplies where we budgeted for $7.2 and we came in at $7.19, which is also a positive variance. And then we have budgeted for $12,001 for other services and charges and we came in at $12.4, which is a negative $320,000 variance. And then we also had on the debt service, a $2.5 million positive variance, but that was due to not having paid on the line of credit that we paid in August. So anyway, we came out with a $1.464 million plus to our fund balance for the year. Now, these, this information is before depreciation. The auditors will do the depreciation expense for the enterprise fund, so it's not included in these numbers. These financials will be sent to the auditors and they're supposed to begin their audit in October. And, okay, and for the next meeting in October, I will have the July and August financials to present. And these, these numbers will help us to be able to prepare the budget, which hopefully we can get that done maybe before the next meeting somehow or other, so that we have financials that we can compare to a budget.
Okay. Any questions? And also this available, the report she gave. If anybody wants that, we'll be sure and be glad to give it to you. The only thing it's not going to have is sound assumptions. They're going to come in, Deborah, starting when?
October 1st.
October 1st. They'll come in and take these figures. They'll make, she's actually even doing the entries.
Yeah, I'm doing the entries.
And they'll come in and audit basically what we've done and they'll make some adjustments as far as depreciation and things of that nature. And Deborah's done a real good job on this and it looks good. I mean, I think things are still headed in the right direction and we're encouraged by this. Any questions from the Alderman or Deb before we move on? Okay. We don't have any occupation or outdoor sign applications at this time, so we're going to go to number four. This past week, Johnny and the acting fire chief or Natchez came and visited with me and wanted to, us to bring it to the council to consider a mutual aid agreement between Vidalia Fire Department and the Natchez Fire Department. So Johnny, I'm going to let you elaborate a little bit about that. And the reason why we've got to this point is, my question was, in y'all's opinion, both of those, both of those guys have said, is this good for both of us? And they say it is, so that's why we're here tonight. And we, but we do want the blessing of the council as we move forward with this. Johnny?
Normally, we've already been doing this for years. It's just Natchez has never really called to ask us to help them for anything. They've got a ladder truck. They've been having one, but it's an old truck. And approximately three weeks ago, I guess it was, he come to us and asked if it was any way that we could bring ours there in the city limits itself. They covered the whole county as well. But I said, the only thing we could do is be in the city limits. And if we get a call, we've got to come back. And he understood that. But they've never called us to come and help them. They have come and helped us on this side of the bridge several times. They, they come when we had the fire for the cleaners fire. They come helped then. They helped us on the T&amp;J fire we had outside of the city limits here. And they also went all the way as far as Fairdy and helped Fairdy when they had several house fires that caught them fired all at one time. So they have come across several times and helped us. So I mean, when they asked about us being able to bring our ladder truck over there, I didn't see where it would be any problem whatsoever, because they definitely would help us more than what we could help them. They've got way more guys that are on duty every day. That's what helped them with the fire they had last weekend was because it was right at shift change. So they had like 30 guys there. It's like right at 15 they have for, on each, all together for each day. And so that give them 30 guys there. So that helped them tremendously with the fire they had. But it's been, it's just a neighborly thing to do, you know? I mean, and it's not going to put Vidalia at jeopardy as far as if they get a call and we send our truck, because we're only going to send one truck. And that's going to leave us with our other three trucks that we have here. If they need a truck, it's nine times out of 10 going to be the ladder truck. But their, their ladder truck they've got is an old ladder truck, but they are, it's already been approved for them to get another brand-new ladder truck and start it getting built as well. So they're going to have way more equipment, way more guys to where they could assist us more than what we could ever assist them. If anyone has any questions about it, I'd be glad to answer it. We have an automatic aid agreement with Nolan out at the district. And what that means is if we have a fire inside city limits of Vidalia, Nolan gets a call at his fire department at the same time we get a, we get a call. So they respond at the same time with us. Mutual aid agreement is what we're talking about trying to do with Natchez. And that is, if they get a call, they're going to go to the scene with it first and see if they need any assistance. It's not going to be, we get a call at the same time they get it and we're going to start responding and then get halfway there and they call and say, it's nothing to it, you can turn around. We're not going to do it that way. It's going to be, once they get to the scene and see that it's big enough that they need assistance, then they'll call and let us know that. As far as our rating system goes, it's not going to put us out of, out of the area or anything long enough to where it's going to affect our rating. And as soon as we get back, as soon as we get a call, we're coming right back with that truck. And we've already got three there as well. I think Mr. Brennan has called PIAL. She told me earlier that she had and that they said, as long as we had three other trucks here and that one was there, you know, it wasn't going to take away our points from us.
Tell them also, we've also got with PIAL and we requested them to come in and do a preliminary grading. So us, you know, several of us are new in this thing. I have the books and what they asked for. And I'm going to involve Bobby Paul and several others, even our other department heads, to be involved in this as we discuss with those people exactly what we need to do to make our rating better and what are some things that we're doing that we don't have to do to keep our rating the same.
Right. It's, it's very complicated. I mean, it's, it's hard. I mean, once the mayor and I think it was Mr. Bill, we had the guy that come and actually give us our last grade that we had, come in and try to explain it to them. And I mean, it's, it's hard for someone to just read what they're telling us. We've got to go by to what he's saying that we've got to do. It just seems like it's unfair the way the things that they say that we've got to do to be able to get the grade that we've got. And it just seems very unfair that we have to go through all the stuff we do. You can't compare us to another city that's got 4,200 people in it and say, well, this fire, this fire department over here only has four or five guys on duty. Why do y'all have seven on duty? You know, and how are they got a four and y'all got a three? It's so many different things that come into it that the amount of industry you have in your town, the interstate you have running through it, the multiple-story buildings, some of the huge buildings like Walmart or like the Fruit of the Loom place we have, the square footage comes into account with that. We've got excellent water and you would think that would help you, but instead, the water gets a score of a certain level and then your fire department gets a score of a certain level. If they're not the same, it's a divergence. So whatever the difference is, the water is higher than what the fire is, it takes points away from you. And it don't seem right, but that's how it is. It's almost like, well, let's turn the pressure down a little or something. You can't do that, because that's what they, it seems like they want you to do, but you can't do it that way. But they, they check everything in the world from the firefighters we've got. Every one of them are certified as firefighters and they got to keep their, their training up every year. The guy comes in, he'll come in in 2020 again and he'll look back on 2019 and he'll see how many people we have working there. They'll, he'll want to know everybody's training record and see if that they're up to date. Every call that we get, they want to know who's on duty that day and how many people showed up to that scene for that fire. All of this stuff goes in and he compiles it together and comes up with a number and that's where we get our grade from. And it's, like I said-
And why is that so important? Why is that grade so important?
The grading, it's, it's like in school, you know? And we're, from like a 70 to a 79 is, is a three, is where we're at right now. So if we go, the grading goes from a one to a 10. And 10 being the worst number you can get because you're higher on your insurance is what you're going to be paying for your property taxes and stuff for your fire insurance. And we're at a three. So, but we're right at the borderline of a three going to a four is where we're at. And that's what, you know, the other administration's seen that as well and that's why we decided to get the ladder truck to go with it. Just having the ladder truck there, it's, that's why we got seven guys on the shift now, because you've got to have the right amount of men to be able to cover the equipment that you have. If you have the equipment there, but you don't have the manpower to operate that equipment, well, you're not going to get points for the equipment. And the amount of money we spent on the equipment dictates why we've got to have the manpower there as well. But all of this going together is what gets us to our grade. And like the mayor's saying, I mean, it's a lot of it we don't understand because of the way they tried to explain it to us. But if we can all get together and this other guy, we put in a request so that they'll come in and it's like a preliminary grading for us. It won't count against us. It'll be there to help us. If they come in and can tell us what we can do or change something up and still keep the grade we've got or either go a little better than what we got, that's what we want to work for. So that's what we're going to try to fine tune that as well.
All right. That puts us back to what we started with. I'd like any comment or recommendations from council?
Only thing that I personally, I know we talked about travelers insurance or something like that. Did anybody, kind of, we talked the day we met about the insurance that covers our firefighters or even the police department if anybody goes from one town to another as far as coverage. Did anybody, did you, anybody research or find out, did we make sure we had that installed and everything was taken care of and everything was on the up and ups on it?
We have it ourselves, but I'm sure it falls under the same umbrella as it does as well as our ambulance service, because our ambulance service, they're firefighters as well. And if we pick someone up and bring them to Merritt, that's out of state as well, you know? We still have to travel across there as well. So-
I think as long as you're within the scope of an emergency, I think that you're certainly covered. I think, but we will, that's a good question, Robert. I think that's a good point and we'll, we'll verify that.
Because we travel out of state for like the dump and things like that, it is likely that when the insurance, I don't know, because I haven't seen it, but it is likely that when the insurance was set up, it was set up for multiple states, which is a question, do you travel outside the state in which you reside? Since we're already going out of state in certain circumstances, I feel certain that it's, the provision is there, but it is something to check on.
We'll check on that for sure. What about the mutual aid? Is council okay with that?
Do we need to make a resolution or anything like that?
What are we doing? If we're already doing it and it works, it's working like it is, what, what action are we going to take?
I don't know. Was there ever anything approved before for mutual aid, Johnny?
As far as having any paperwork on it, normally when we have an agreement like that, we keep it on file and it's signed and dated and things like that. I look for that and I can't find it nowhere. Like I said, I've been here since 91 and it's just, it's been one of those verbal agreements that we've always had.
We need that documentation in place.
Yeah, we can get that going. I mean, so, right.
All right. So I'll make the motion that we have an agreement put in place that the firefighters can communicate with the surrounding cities if need be to their aid. I mean, council-
Can we clarify that as far as mutual aid? This is mutual aid with Natchez. We already have an existing, automatic aid with Concordia Parish. We need this to be specific.
Natchez.
With Natchez, a mutual aid agreement with Natchez. Counsel?
Sir? He was talking to you. Who was talking to me?
I was, I mean, do we need to do this by resolution or just?
I think we need to start with that. I have, this is my first impression of this tonight, so I hadn't had time to look at it. Now I have to check and see if it's going to be something in the nature like cooperative endeavors or whatever else. And I feel like I need to check to stay about regulations on out of state. I move that council has 30 days to research it and come back.
Because I think, I mean, we need a cooperative endeavor, yeah? Which hasn't been written.
I'm not sure what, when we have to go back. And then we don't know what's under the umbrella of emergency services.
Right.
And because I know police department, high-speed chases going across the bridge, at some point they go 1022 unless they can transfer that traffic. God bless you. You go 1022 that chase if it's problematic going across that bridge and try to transfer that traffic to Natchez if at all possible, right?
Correct.
Okay. So with the fire, which will be emergency services going to Natchez, we, we just need to research that and make sure that we, you know, in line, because that could be a bad thing. As long as we've been doing it and it hadn't had to have a name or we hadn't had to call it anything, it's been okay. And the minute that we call it something and become a part of it, then it's problematic.
I just feel like, Tron, I agree with you to a point that the governing body needs to okay and we have a blessing for it and have it documented, because if we were to have somebody over there and then something happened here that opens a town for liability because we didn't have our resources here and we didn't have an agreement and nobody had the authority to, to self-record. And I think we do need something of record. So I agree, we'll wait 30 days and let him research and see the best way to do that.
When we did with Fire District 2, we did have to approve some sort of paperwork, which we don't have tonight, so, yeah.
Counsel, does my, does my motion still stand?
We got to rip that.
We don't need it.
Pardon?
I move that council has 30 days to research it.
A motion made?
Second.
Taken by Alderman Doray. All in favor?
Aye.
Just one thing, I mean, between now and 30 days, if they would call to ask, would you just tell them we can't do it?
That's not what anybody said.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I mean, if they call us during the night and they, they ask if we could bring one truck over there, should we still go ahead and-
What would you have done if that-
I would have sent them.
If it hadn't come up today?
I would have sent them.
And that goes to what I said.
Right.
Until you call it something, you don't really have a problem.
Right.
I would, I would proceed with caution.
Oh, definitely.
That's, that's not a recommendation from the board. That's my personal opinion. I would just proceed with caution, because you've got people's lives hanging in the balance. But I don't want some of our people to get hurt or something bad.
Right. That's the thing with the whole agreement deal, you know, it's, we need them and they come over here and one of those got hurt trying to save one of our system.
Johnny, what'd you do when we talked about it? You said you already got a call from about over there.
No, they come and ask.
They come and ask. But I'm saying, but what was the answer at that point? We could or we couldn't?
Right then, I told him we could until I talked to the mayor.
And then he said we couldn't.
I told him we couldn't at that time.
Until we talked to you guys.
He's your boss.
Right.
I told him.
That's what I'd listened to.
And that's why when they, they showed it to me, because my initial reaction is when it was asked to me, could we send our ladder truck to Natchez? My initial response was no, you know, because, you know, and after talking more and got both chiefs in and we met at length and talking about their, some of their aldermen as well and Alderman Gardner dropped by for a minute, you know, it was, we came to a decision to, they said it would be beneficial to us. And so that's one of the things, even when we did talk to the PIAL, you know, person who's going to come in and maybe do a grade, is get them tell us really what will that mean for us as far as the grade.
Right.
But, I mean, as, as far as direction, I feel like we've been doing it, you know, and we feel like insurance-wise, we'll verify that tomorrow. I feel like if it says something that can save lives in our area and they going to reciprocate, I think that would be fine.
Okay.
Anybody against that? Because it could be vice versa. We could have maybe need them, so. Okay. All right. On number five, last month, we introduced the Vidalia Policies and Procedures Manual. This is one of the things that was mandated by the legislative auditor and we have that available. And if anybody who wants a copy of it, it's been, been available publicly. And do I hear a motion? We can go into the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Alderman Probst?
Aye.
Taken by Alderman Betts? All in favor?
Aye.
We're now in public hearing for our procedure manual, policies and procedures. And basically what this is, is just a little overview. It's got our cash receipts policy, bank reconciliation policy, petty cash and change funds policy, investment policy, customer utility accounts, utility service termination policy. It just deals with a lot of things financing that there's just not been a record for the town. And if it was, it's very much outdated. And we went through it. It even gets into ethics, debt service, payroll and personnel policies, budget policy, traffic citations policy, fuel card policies, credit card policy. And that's what it does, is establishes guidelines and policies for us to go by to run our office and be what we manage our town with. And so that's what, what we have, it's available to anybody if they want it. But tonight, we need to adopt that. So any questions from the public? Okay. With no comment, do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
Motion.
Motion made by Alderman Doray. Do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Gardner. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now we're to item number six, which is the board approval of the ordinance adopting and enacting policies and procedures manual for the town.
I have a couple of questions before we do that. If we're looking at page six, one of the customer utility accounts, new customer accounts, number two. The statement on here is talking about prior to providing utility services to a new customer. And the wordage goes on to say that a deposit for gas, electrical services based on a deposit fee schedule approved by management. Are we, isn't that something that's going to be included in the ordinance adopted by the Board of Aldermen?
Yes.
So should that be reworded to reflect by ordinance?
Well, we can amend it after that, but right now, that's what we're doing. It's something that management is, that's, that's the fee they've established and that's what we've been going by. And that's probably why it's worded like that. There are a couple of other things we're going to tweak in there. We know that. Deborah, we've all talked about them, but you know, that's something we can amend once we get in there and get this ordinance adopted to go in and tweak these different areas.
Okay. But all those amendments have to come back?
Pardon?
All the amendments have to come back through the same process?
Yeah, we would, we would, we would do the same thing.
Yeah. Another one is page 15, number six.
Page which one?
Page 15, number six, dealing with purchasing. And this one's talking about competitive bids for purchases and the wordage here is over a stated amount. Do we need to define that amount?
It's stated, it's stated later on over in here on-
Oh, so it's stated later rather than previous?
Yeah. And it's got, and state, the state law has, you know, bid, the amount that you got.
The 15 to 30, 30, whoever.
Mm-hmm. It's got all that.
All right. Something just to consider on page 16, number five, we're talking about, you know, the mayor's authorized to sign checks. Have y'all considered a two-signature policy on checks so that any payments made to, you know, I mean, you get a, you get a paycheck as well and you sign your own?
I get automated deposit, but it's okay. Most of them are on automated deposit. We do have, the, the policy, the, the law requires that the mayor sign the check or at least one person sign. It's not a requirement for two, but with the, the controls that we have in place and monitoring this as far as who handles actually cutting the checks and how they're handled,[1793.33] they're handled, uh, to me, I don't, I, I mean, if that's what y'all wanna do, but I think that this has been working good without having to get a second person to come sign it, whether it's, whether Jay be authorized, but he shouldn't be because he's cutting checks.
Mm-hmm.
Or, but John, I mean, as, as, you know, being the mayor pro temp, if I'm out of pocket, he signs those things. But I do look at every check that's signed for the town. And I think this has been completely satisfactory with the auditors as well, so. That's something, if y'all wanna change it, we can do that, it's just gonna be an inconvenience for the mayor pro temp. But we do have policies and procedures in place, which a lot of this does is the flow of how these things, you know, come about.
Yeah, and there's, I do, it's very clear, there's several eyes on everything in here and that's great. It's great the way it's set up. But if no, I mean, if nobody else has concern with it, that is not an issue. On page nineteen, we're talking about the financial reporting policy. And it talks about the monthly reporting and that's a couple of places in here. I am currently and, and have been concerned about the, the lag in the budget to actuals and the financial reporting. And I would like to see that the budget to actuals and the financial reporting be given to the board from the immediately previous month, so that we can ensure immediate action can be taken if we find that there is an issue, recommendation. You know, you say in here that, you know, rec, it should include recommendations of action. And when they're, you know, two or, or more months behind, there are several months there where the board does not have the information that we need to make suggestions and recommendations.
Okay, I can, I'll be glad to address that, Deborah, and then, of course, I don't see Mindy here. There is, there are, and Jay will bring me, there's, there's stacks literally of bills that tall that come in that we have to go through and verify and stuff. And to get a precise, you know, at the end of that month, within two weeks, you get that report, that's not possible. I can tell you, it's not, we don't have the staff to do that. It takes Deborah that whole month of getting everything in, bills that, that's been, you know, where the mark's got chemicals that we hadn't got a bill for or something that, you know, it just, it takes her a whole month to get that together. And it's gonna be a month behind. Uh, and she does a very good job at that, but it's, it's a big process to say that you can get a, a complete financial of that month, or just within the second Tuesday of the month is impossible. I, I saw like, say, I don't know, I don't know of any towns that could do that. If they do, I'd like to know how they do it and how big they are.
I don't, I don't think the month, the, the month is the problem. Just, we just got June, Deborah just gave us.
Yeah, no, well, this was my reason.
A recap of, of.
The, the reason why you've only got June, we don't have a budget. So there's nothing to, to give you a budget, there's no budget for us to do.
But what I'm saying, this isn't the first time that this has happened, that we've been a couple, two or three, at least two months behind in.
I don't.
I always tried to present it, like, I would have had July's ready for this meeting, but that would have been the only one that I would have even begun to have ready for this meeting.
I got you, I'm, I'm standing. So what's the standard, what, what's the standard gonna be?
Well, I, I think, for example, right now, this September meeting, we would have, we would have July. We'd have July complete financial information. Because August, August just got through, I mean, here, and she, there's no way she could, you know, put all these things together and get a.
We could use estimates or we could use not completed financials, they would just be rolling.
No, not when you say.
It wouldn't be complete.
Not when you say budget to actuals and we, we can't, we can't use estimates like that.
Yeah, no, and I wouldn't want to use estimates, because that means I have to go back and take out the estimates and adjust it to the actuals.
I got it, I, I got it, I just.
The only reason why she doesn't have July is because we don't have a budget and there's nothing, there's nothing for her to keep key in other than, now, she's got the actual figures, but there's no, there's no comparison of the parts.
On June's data, I mean, I've done a lot of entries reviewing everything that's in the balance sheet, never getting it ready for the auditors, which to me, that was important to do for this month instead of reviewing the July, because there's not enough time for one thing and it just, um, you know, it's the best I can do. And that's nothing unusual to, for any businesses to wait until on the calendar year to February to present their financials and skip January only because there's not a lot going on and because you got so much to do at year end to close out the year, it's just, it's a lot of work. But, but I can present them to you separately or, you know, right now, it's gonna take me another two weeks before I can get July's and August ready. So it's gonna be the, and then working on the budget, it, it's a, um, it's, it's a lot of work involved, it really is. But I can understand your reasons, I do. I don't know how we can ever get it done and it won't be the balance, we don't even get the bank statements till, they don't even come always at the first of the month. And Mindy, oh, we just have to have somebody else reconcile and enter in all the data. It would take another person, another accountant, which, you know, that'd be fun.
You'd be okay with that one?
I'd be perfectly fine with that.
So are you, Wendy, you reconcile bank statements?
Well, we're not doing it daily, which I have mentioned to Mindy about, we could do it because it's online, we could do it daily. But she's entering data every day for all these different bank accounts, which there's probably, I, I never counted them up. But it is a lot of different accounts. It would be changing the way she does things, which we could and we've talked about it, but we haven't really gotten to that point of being able to do it. Therefore, all the entries would be done during the month, you know, she wouldn't have to really reconcile it because it would already be there. But if she takes vacation or anything happens, that you're sick or out sick or whatever, it just blows out to pieces because you can't, it's hard to recover and keep, you know, make back up what you missed out on that day. We can still continue to try to work to that, I can hope to Mindy again, but I really think it would take another person to help us to be able to, to enter the data as detailed as she does it and to be able to, uh, to get it all entered and reconcile to some degree. It's a lot of work. But you're welcome to come see the process for sure and see if you can make some recommendations on trying to get it done faster.
It's pretty, pretty extensive, I mean, it really is, I mean.
I just, I, what's our level of expectation? Two months, a month and a half?
I think that Alderman McCoy, if he have a meeting, if it's a September meeting, you would be getting July financials complete. You wouldn't have August, you'd have July. I mean, if, if they're setting, if they're setting standard or, or anything, you know, I'd like to, you know.
I just asked the question, what's, what's the expectation of, what, what should our expectation be?
I just said, I think you should expect to get July, like this meeting here, you should get it in September.
Okay.
Okay.
Does that mean too that, like, invoices that are received, is there a two-month lag in paying invoices due?
No, they get in unless we don't get them, because, you know, we don't always get them when they send them either, because they have to go out and get approved by all the department heads and it comes back to us to get them entered. And so it is, but we try to get all the bills paid as soon as, well, not, you know, we don't pay them as soon as we get them, but we do keep people paid.
Okay, what else?
On twenty, on the travel and expense reimbursement policy, nothing, um, although it does say that business travel, including travel for training purposes, must be approved in advance by the mayor and be in writing, which I think is, is fantastic. Have you considered adding wordage in there that no reimbursement should be generated for spouse or guest of the approved traveler?
That's, that's, that's a given, you don't, that's not, you can't do that. That's, and I, I don't know of anybody that has that I've seen or signed any kind of expense that I've seen.
Okay, so you're not aware of that, okay.
I know, I know that, that April has traveled with me, I pay off her expenses, even her meals and, um, off her expenses. And I hope, I mean, everybody else is supposed to, and I look at those expense, you know, those expense reports and sign them when we do the check.
Since we're there, I also have some concerns as well. My personal opinion, um, when it comes to as far as the travel, um, I know we have not done this or practiced this in the past as far as the board is concerned, but, um, prior approval by the board to maybe go to LMA or something like that, I don't totally agree that that's something that, that's a given, because that is something that you're doing to better your community. So if it's something of that nature, I don't think that should be inclusive in, um, getting any type of approval. So I think it should.
I agree. Yeah, I mean, if anybody wants to go to LMA on this board, I think that, that.
Anything dealing with the, yeah.
So you're saying that the policy now is you get prior approval? Because you've gone.
That's, I've gone several years.
But you get, you had to get prior.
Now I would have to get approval.
The policy says that.
And I don't think.
Travel by board members should be approved by the board and be in compliance.
I don't think no other town is abiding by this either, because I've, uh, it was brought to my attention.
And that's, and that's something, if y'all wanna change it, I'm gonna leave that up to the board, that's y'all's call, what you wanna do.
I don't think that should be, I mean, if you're taking care of business for the city, it's business for the city. And I don't personally, I know I wouldn't, uh, take advantage and I don't think any other alderman up here would either.
I don't know how you could take advantage if you paying your dues to get in, you know, what it takes to get in the conference and pretty much cut and dry expenses while you on, so.
Well, the town pays for that.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
But I mean, it's cut and dry is what you get reimbursed for, you know, as far as expenses go.
Now, it's worded travel by board members, um, are you wanting to say with the exception of travel to LMA? Or are you wanting to take the entire sentence out so that any travel that any board member deems necessary for his or her position does not require prior approval?
As long as it's in, um, in compliance with something for the, um, the municipality.
Yeah.
Anything dealing with LMA or anything of that nature. I don't think it should, it has never been a problem with in the past and I don't think it should be a problem with now. Some may wanna go get educated, some may not wanna go get educated, but that's upon that person, him or his self.
Yeah.
So.
I agree that I don't think that there should be an issue if any alderman wants to go to something that would benefit him or her as an alderman. However, I think if we are asking everybody citywide for approval, I don't think that asking, I don't think anybody would be denied if it, if it were brought before the board, because I think we all agree with you. But I, I do think that if we're asking everybody else and all of the other elected officials and, you know, everybody else to comply with seeking prior approval, I think it, it's also, it's kinda fair that we would, we would fall under that blanket as well. Because I know that if you came to the board and, and said, hey, I wanna go to the LMA, it's not gonna be a problem, because we all agree that if you're able to go, you should be able to go.
I just don't agree with that sentence, so. My personal opinion, opinion is that it should be left out as far as the board is concerned, because we don't go that many places nowhere, you can probably say one or two places out the whole year.
Yeah, I agree with that.
For those that do go.
John, do you have an opinion?
Uh, I just know that place that I work, that when I leave, I'm going to it, every time I leave, it's pre-approved.
I think it could be abused.
I have a, I have a form that I fill out.
Right.
Requesting travel and it's approved by my supervisor and passed on to other people. It's, uh, does it get to be a pain sometimes? Yeah, but I've never been denied going, as you said, it's just a formality. Also, it's, it's a, it's another way of bookkeeping too. Because when you get back, then you have to turn things back in that, that attached to that, that form that says, yeah, I did go, here's my expense. You know, so, you know, I, I don't have a problem with it.
Tommy?
I was like, put in a travel voucher, like anybody else. I mean, it's just, it's a given, but like John said, it is a means by which to track your expenses and what you actually spent. Plus, there are times when I've seen people denied because their, their budget restraints caused them where they couldn't, you know? I mean, I've known people that were going to conventions, they said, no, you can't go this year because we're not, we're out of funds for those conventions, so. And my wi, and my wife's educational business, whenever she was traveling a whole lot in different places, I saw several places where they didn't allow them to go because their parish or whatever was, didn't have the fund, so. And they had gone to several, but they denied them on another. So, and some of them were repetitive in, in nature too, those conventions.
So what I'm hearing is the counsel sounds like, Alderman McCoy, did you say you were for leaving it in or taking it out, or?
I didn't even look at the particular sentence, I just feel as if, whatever needs to be done to okay somebody on this board to go wherever, whenever, if it's for the purpose of this city, whatever measures we need to take, that needs to be worded like that.
I'm, I'm in support of what y'all want to do.
Whether it be voucher, uh, and you know what it takes to go to LMA. You know, whether you ought to spend a night, you know whether you ought to come home.
And we kinda did that before, I know one of the times that I was intending to go, Ms. Middleton had sent an email saying, you know, it was this weekend, if you wish to go, please let us know. You know, so we, we kinda did let them know in advance. We didn't bring it before the board for approval, but, you know, there was always that element of let me know in advance, so the town could pay the registration fee and pay the hotel fees and, and things like that. So it's always really been there, it just wasn't in public that that permission was So, I mean, I just, I don't have a problem with that one, but whatever the board says.
Do y'all wanna make up, have a vote on just that one sentence, travel by board members should be approved by the board and be in compliance of policy?
We can do that.
Uh, not while we're going through a whole, man, you, you ain't voting on the sentence.
Do you wanna just, just keep on going and adopt it as a whole?
No, I wanna keep on going and if we, the more things we point out, the more things that need to be changed before we vote for it.
Well, we know there's gonna probably be some, we, we need to adopt it. I mean, unless there's something in here glaringly that's just completely wrong, I mean, just go ahead and get it adopted and then we can go back and do the amendments.
Well, I'm, I'm against voting on one particular sentence.
Okay, all right, well, let's move on then. Any other questions on that before we move on? Any other questions?
Page twenty, go ahead.
You go ahead, finish up here and then I'll get.
No, I was on a different page, so you go ahead, are you gonna back on that page?
I'm backing up to sixteen.
Okay.
Contract services and policies. I think I've had some issues brought to my attention on local buying, local services that are not being sought by the City of VD and, uh, I think there needs to be a statement in here if there's anything that can be bought locally. It should be bought locally, services or whatever they are. And it should be something that, in this contracting for services, it should be in there. It should be something in there for local buying. Because there are instances that I know right now that we have not done that with a particular entity and, you know, I hope by the next year we get it done like that. Plus, uh, any dollars turned over in our community is turned over more than once, instead of in another community where it's being done.
I agree with you a hundred percent, I agree with you a hundred percent.
But we're not, we're not buying locally on certain instances.
We're, we're, we're told, we're telling people, our people to buy local, and that, you know, they just can't, I mean, uh, but there is also, if it's, you know, there's also a price with that. And if it falls within these dollar and things, then we do have to get bids, I mean.
Sure, but, but again, this particular instance is been going on for a couple of years and I brought it to y'all's attention, it's still the same as it was and, and will, I just want it put in there, local buying should be.
I'd like to visit with you again, because I'm trying to remember who you're talking about, because I would, I would be curious to know, so. Okay?
So you'd like a statement, what you're saying, what I understand your statement is you'd like a statement added in here that any services and materials that can be purchased locally from the town of Fidelia should be purchased here.
In local, in the local area.
And we, and we do that, to my knowledge, I mean.
I know, I know of instances where it's not being done and it's big money and it's way over this thirty thousand, so.
Okay, well, unless you wanna talk about it now.
No, I'm not gonna talk about it now, but I just want that put in there. I'm not gonna talk about it now, but I just want that put in there. I would like to put that in there if we're gonna tweak it tonight or tweak it later, I would like it.
Well, we can, we, but I would like to visit with you on what you're talking about because I, I really, if you said that to me, I certainly don't know. Because if it was over thirty thousand, it's gotta be put up for bid. Okay, next.
Page twenty-three, traffic citation policy. Is the chief in the room? You familiar with page twenty-three? Come up here and get. Come up here and get a copy of this.
You got an extra one, please? Are you an extra?
Just take that. Familiarize yourself.
Robert's reading that, can I do number twenty-one?
Mayor, you wanna continue on while he's reading that? She has.
Okay, alright, uh, or anybody else?
Page twenty-one, uh, transportation guidelines, number two, municipality-owned vehicles. And it's talking about how vehicles owned by the municipality may be used for business travel only. Is this seeking to stop all of the take-home vehicles that are throughout the town? Or is driving to and from work considered you, you know, business travel?
Okay, can you wanna be specific? I mean, as far as, I mean, I know I take, I, I take the vehicle home most of the time.
Yeah, I'm talking about any of them, yours and.
I know that, I know that the police department, I know several, uh, a lot of the officers take theirs. Uh, as far as any other, I can't, I don't know if anybody else is taking them home, uh, other than fire chief.
And that's just what I want clarification on, or is this, if adopted in this way, will that stop you being able to take home uh, the city hall vehicle, the chief being able to take home the fire vehicles, um, or the police officers?
I think we've already agreed that all EMS people, uh, police and fire.
Yeah.
That's what I thought too. We had already agreed because I think it was said that if they're in an emergency situation, that vehicle already be up on hand, so.
And that's what I want, that's what I'm seeking to protect. I'm not trying.
Saying, does it need to include EMS on that particular statement? Vehicles on both of them, excluding EMS vehicle? Or whoever you want to designate as those vehicle.
I just wanna make sure that if presented and, and worded this way, that it will not be able to be determined that these vehicles cannot be taken home for the ones who have already been granted the privilege of doing so. I just want clarification on the statement.
As far as I know, I've said the ones that if, I guess I would be the only one that's probably taking a vehicle home that's not that service. Now, if y'all mean, but when I leave my home, I usually make, run through town. I don't come up to city hall and get in a vehicle and go right around. When I get to city hall, I'm usually here. But I do, when I leave the home, I usually go through the riverfront, go through some of the neighborhoods before I even make it to the office. So, most days.
Yeah, and, and, and I'm not trying to stop you from doing that. I'm, I'm not in any way, I'm, I'm seeking to protect everybody who does that, just to make sure that this statement will not ultimately cause, you know, anybody to say, nope, we made this rule now, you can't take your vehicle home. I'm seeking to protect what's already in place.
I don't know of anybody else that would be taking their vehicle home other than enforcement or public safety.
Okay.
Unless, and if somebody has, I, I mean, Mark or Lee, y'all, y'all don't have anybody, do you? I don't think, uh, I can't think of anybody else that does.
Okay, good. So it won't change what's already in place and that's what we wanna make sure of.
Okay. Anybody else?
Is the chief ready?
You good?
Read the whole policy?
Um, just like, don't like?
Well, a lot of that.
That's a city hall policy manual.
Law, but a lot of that is, um, a lot of that we're already doing, but a lot of that is, is, is to my discretion. I have the discretion to go before city court versus district court on all citations.
Okay, my, my question, it's in a policy and procedural manual for the city. You have your own policy and procedural manual, right?
Correct.
And you have guidelines that you go by.
I believe that needs to be, you know, took out because we, we have a law that we have to go by that dictates some of that. And uh, some of that is to my discretion anyway.
Well, there's a lot of stuff, this is dealing with accountability of tickets that was filed within city hall and the monies.
Every, every one of those tickets are state citations, which is accounted for by the state.
I understand, but still, we have responsibility to have audit functions and stuff on citations. For example, police officer shall be prohibited from collecting fines. I don't know where that's in your, got the, the police policy. But these are things that we got that were handed to us that's, that's, you know, should, should be in your policies and procedures. I mean, there's just things right here. I don't see anything here that, uh.
Everything we have is accounted for.
Right, I understand, but still, just like us, we have, we have some, we have an audit function that that follows up and checks, you know, to make sure and verify things. I think you gotta have the same thing with, with every department, whether it's police, fire, whoever it is. We gotta have an audit function to be able to do those things, record, I mean, uh.
This is the first time I've seen this policy. Uh, like I said, some of it we're already doing, but some of it is, uh, shouldn't, probably shouldn't be in there. Might be something we need to look at.
I, I would like to see one thing that's in the accounting for traffic citations that's in there and shouldn't be in there. I've just, one, one thing.
That's the next page.
That's on the next page, accounting for traffic. I'm just trying to see what it, what is in there that that y'all don't want in there and that just looks like good controls and.
Well, you got the, you got the police department, then you have city court.
I understand it, but it's still city of Bidelia.
How many more people do we need managing the tickets?
Well, don't you think, well, I, I think you ought to have an accounting process in place for tickets.
Is it a, is it a trust issue with the police department?
Joey, it's not a trust, well, is it a trust issue for, for Silas Simmons to come and audit our books? It's not a trust issue, it's a checks and balances issue.
Our, our stuff gets audited or can be audited by the state, which could be felony offenses. So we're gonna do it, we're gonna go, we're gonna be accountable.
I, I, look, it's not a trust issue. I'm telling you, this is policy that municipalities should have. They should be.
I mean, I don't, I don't have no problem with sharing with you our, the, the way we do things, but the, uh, uh, let's see, like I said, I'm just handing this, that's the first time I've seen it.
I mean, I'd be glad to read those twelve things. I mean, for anybody to I think this, I think it's just good controls. I mean.
How are you wanting to do the, the fines, the collecting fines? I mean, that, that would be, that would take a job off of us if somebody wants to collect them.
Who's collecting them now?
People walk in, they, they, we got a box that we put them in and we, then they go to city court.
Or who's docking, I mean, just like us, we, we have to document when we open up that box.
This was recommended by the legislative auditor. What'd you say, Debra?
This was recommended by the legislative auditor. They said that, that we're supposed to be doing this, which we haven't, but we're supposed to.
Did you confer with the chief when creating this? Did you let him?
This, this has been available for a month.
I hadn't, that's the first I've seen.
Did you, did, but when you were writing this, did you talk to your elected chief?
No, I haven't.
Didn't have to.
But I mean, I didn't talk, this came from, like Deborah said, this came from the legislative auditor.
Counselor?
Judge?
But I go back to say, if you're gonna, if you're gonna write something in the future, in my opinion, you should get with the guy you're gonna write it with. I mean, you should have negotiated this thing with him and talked, because this is his first round with it, so. That's my point, is he should have been involved, just like anybody else, just like you wanna bring somebody in to talk about the fire department. You wanna bring some more people in to determine if Johnny's doing what he's supposed to be doing or not doing what he's supposed to be doing. Same thing with Joey. There should have been some other people brought in.
Trying to make this a trust thing and it's not a trust thing. This is.
I'm not trying to make it a trust thing.
Okay, this is, this is controls for the cities.
I think it, I think it really needs to be re-looked at because just like the, the tickets, I mean, it, it don't matter to me whether we take them or who takes them, it's just a courtesy for the people because we're open twenty-four seven. If somebody comes in after hours, wants to pay their ticket, we got a dispatcher that takes the money. Other words, they have to come back the next day. It's just a courtesy. Uh, it's just little thing like that needs to be looked at and tweaked a little bit. I have no problem with somebody else wants to take the, the, the money for the tickets. It's all documented anyway, they get a receipt.
It still has to be this money, this city, this, this, this money sets comes into the city that have to be audited.
Mayor, Alderman McCray, I tried to ask you a question a few minutes ago and I think we need to clarify some things. Which says police officer shall be prohibited from collecting fines. Who's gonna, else is gonna collect? That's one of my questions.
If you're out on the street, they can't say, like in the police car, you can't just say, I'm gonna pay my fine.
We don't, we don't do that now, that's against the law.
I know, well, that's, all this is saying, stuff that's already you do, you don't, you know, it's just in this right here.
The present situation, I can't speak actually since I left the bench, but I think that Judge McAdmore is doing the same thing. He says that the, the police department is in charge of physically collecting the money if people want to pay. You know? And if, and when they come to court, there's an officer there sitting. If, if they wanna pay after they get fined or something in court, they can do it. But I, I think I, I can't speak for the current city judge, but I can tell you, I never handle money. Didn't wanna handle money, wasn't gonna handle money. So I think we have to look at what, I think, I think this means that the officer on the street, when he gives a ticket, can't collect the money.
Right.
I think that's what it's meant to say.
Mm-hmm.
But the police department is the one who actually collects the money and then brings it to the court. And they sign for everything, so that you know where the money came in and where it's going and that sort of thing is accounted for. The, the point about the citation is handled by the city court. I can't remember offhand, I'm I think the, the chief, I think, has authority to go to district court if he wants to. And that's, that's state, I don't think the city can override state law. And I'm just throwing this out, you know, I think most of the citations go through the city court. DWI is, uh. Yeah, DWI is too. There, there, there are some things where he does have. Once you get past DWI second, it's gotta go to the district court. Correct. The statement that all actions will be handled by the city court, I, I don't think that's true.
Where's that at? Which one, which number you looking at? Number nine?
It was that one, the thing about police officer not collecting fines. That's the only few things I just looked at myself tonight, but.
I mean, a- again, this, this is, this is you know, I, I can, I, I would agree with that, maybe all actions because he, the chief does have discretion and I, I agree with that. He should have discretion. I think, I think the actions they're talking about on the traffic citations might be the, the those that do, may, maybe come to court as far as any kind of punishment, as far as any kind of service or something. Is that not, am I reading that right? All, all actions for traffic so will be handled by the court as far as action to be taken against somebody that come, you know, this part.
Well, it stands to reason, if, if the chief files the ticket with city court to institute the prosecution, then of course the city court's gonna handle it. But if he filed a DWI third with the city court, Doc will send it back to him saying, we don't, we're not gonna take this because we don't handle DWI thirds.
Did, was this taken from, like, did you type all this yourself or was this taken from, from something? Who, who created this book? You typed it all yourself?
Yeah, I did.
Was it like taken from excerpts?
Yeah, this could have, I'm gonna have to go back and see where it came, cause I took from everywhere.
Yeah, I'm wondering if perhaps some of this, especially this with the police department, was taken from, um, a municipality that had an appointed chief and not an elected chief.
Let me go back.
That's what it's reading.
Yeah, I think the rules are vastly different with an elected chief and an appointed chief.
That the traffic ticket process should be audited annually by the city clerk. That was definitely something the legislative auditor recommended us to do.
Mm-hmm.
So that's why we put this in the policy, was to come up with a policy that we thought that we could try to cover the things that we should be doing and just general type issues. Nothing to be specific or nothing to take away from police chief for sure. But I will go back and see where I got this information and make sure that it's accurate.
Yeah, cause there's, I mean, there's big difference in appointed and elected.
It is big, I, I mean, he, he has his own office, but again.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, what?
You got control of anything?
Uh, alright, what, what others, I mean, what, what do y'all want to do? Cause I, I really think that, that you need to have to be able to account for citations.
I think we need to look at it as where she found the information. I think it's an appointed chief, like Joey said. Look at it, find out what it is and I guarantee you that's what you're gonna find.
As far as the citations, you can account for them any day of the week, anytime.
Well, you send them to city court though, Joey.
Yeah, they're all sent in.
So they, they come through there too?
It's, it's a state law, where we have to do that. We can't hold any tickets. Not one single ticket can we hold. Uh, so you can, they're accounted for. So if, I mean.
And that's all this is saying that you're there, they're gonna be accounted for. That's, that's just.
But some, some of this needs to be took out because it's not, it's not, it needs to be tweaked a little bit, or should I say? Actually, I mean, you could, you could possibly take the whole section out and just see, see uh, the police department policy and procedure on how they do it because.
Alright, what is your procedure on handling cash? If somebody comes in and pays cash?
They get a receipt, goes in a box, then it go to city court.
I mean, who, who all, who all handles it and?
The dispatcher does all the duty because we have a twenty-four seven operation.
Okay, and where's the money put until the time that it's?
It's put, put in a lockbox.
A lockbox or safe or is there any controls? Is it controlled? Who all has access?
It's got twenty-four hour surveillance in a lockbox.
Okay.
You sign in when you get it and you sign out when you open it every time you sign it, in and out every time you open it.
Trust me, I would just soon not even deal with the money either, but we deal with it and we, we do a good job at it and it's all accounted for.
So it's pretty much like dual control. You have dual control. Dual control means more, more, more than one person has access to it. And somebody else witnessed that this is what's being done and you have more than one person that has knowledge of what's going on.
Oh, yes, yes.
So one person just won't have the responsibility and if something comes up later on, it's from my banking experience as well.
It's all for the convenience of the person. If somebody from out of town comes through here and gets a, gets a citation on the weekend, we're the only department other than the fire department that's, that's open twenty-four seven. So they'll come in here, they'll come to the office, pay the, pay the ticket, we got a book, we got a receipt book, it goes into the box, then it goes to the first bid, it goes to city court.
Are those, are those, or is anybody keeping a, a running summary on those tickets and the, uh, this disposition of Joey and the monies? And who collected and where they did go to city court?
City court.
Who's, who's got those records?
I'm assuming.
Counselor? Counselor?
Joey.
Yeah.
This question.
He's asking you a question.
This question, counsel.
On who's got the records for the tickets? Yeah, city court would keep the records for those tickets, right?
Yes.
Yeah. That's what he asked.
When, when the citation is written and the violator is giving their copy and there's a copy the police keep, I think, and there's a copy that goes into city court, to the original file. And the filing of that ticket with the court institutes the prosecution of the case. Now, Ms Doc, in, in the past, she reviews all these things coming in and if the money doesn't, if the money's not right, if there's not a check or something in the form of tickets, you know, something's out amiss, then she'll send it back and say. you know, something's out amiss, then she'll send it back and say, whatever reason, I'm not taking this to the office. And they'll come back later with it. But once she accepts it and they have a list and they check it off and everybody signs it, once that's got it, then the court's responsible for prosecuting that ticket. And at the end, you know, you end up with a mini entry as to what happened with that citation. And it's in the court records. Whether it was dismissed, whether it was guilty or whatever it was, what fine was, it's all in the court minutes.
So finalizing it all, really Joey is the middle man and you're the finalizer.
Well, the judge is.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I mean, the judge is, not you, but the city court.
Once, once accepted, then the court's responsible for filing disposition.
So that would be where you audit, we come in through the city court.
Yeah, that's the checks and balances.
That's your checks and balances through city court, not through the police department, in my opinion.
It starts from the beginning, goes all the way through.
As far as the checks and balances, question goes, all the state ticket citations that we write are sequentially numbered. And when I say I get done with a traffic stop and I wrote a citation, the first thing I do when I'm done is I call my dispatcher. I tell them what the ticket number was and what, what it was for. Speeds and other stops I was in. Then when I come in, we have another book back there where we turn our tickets into a lockbox. We have another log back there that I'll log down ticket number, what it was for, date, time, and who wrote it. I mean, that's two checks and balances right there with the department. Then when, like the chief said, we're 24/7, a lot of people out of town, they may come in at midnight wanting to pay the ticket. And the dispatcher takes the money, we have a receipt book, they're written out. Money goes in the box and we have a receipt book where every transaction goes through there. And we also get the copy of the ticket.
And again, I still think y'all are missing my point. I, look, I have trust in y'all on doing that, but my point is, this is requirement, this is still, the chief of police and the city, uh, the Dade Police Department is under the umbrella of the finances of the city of Dade. And we're required to have a policies and procedures showing that we do these checks and balances. If this omitted in here, they're going to go like, there's nothing in here where we have any kind of ability to audit any department within the town. Am I, y'all see what I'm saying? I mean, it's not anything to do with, I'm just saying, this is in here for policies and procedures that we have the ability to be able to audit these things if the need be.
Chief Evans?
Yes.
Do y'all collect money for fire reports, ambulance fees?
Yes.
There's nothing in here about the fire department?
Now, whatever ambulance fees and things of that nature comes in, it comes into a check and usually comes to city hall.
Uh-huh.
And we'll get it and make the record of it, shall I say, for a building company. And they bring it right back to city hall. Um, where the fire reports go, you know, we've got a receipt book there, receipt cash for that. And like receipt cards, and then spray them to them and give them the correct order.
That's not in here.
But it's coming to city hall. It's under the city hall. Those deposit...
Are you wanting all of our ticket money to come here first?
That's not the process. All I'm...
I got it.
Okay.
It says adopting an actual policy and procedure. But it appears that the policy and procedure that you have with the police department has not been communicated to the chief of police.
I agree.
It appears that it's, these are my words, and I can't find another word that I can use. It's almost like an ambush, a surprise to him because he never saw it.
No, this is...
Before y'all even brought it up to me, adopt.
That's...
He does, this is his first battle of standards. That's a, a lack of communication.
Okay, I appreciate your words there, but this, this is, this is, the legislative auditor wanted us to adopt some policies and procedures, and one of those things, that was one of the things that they did. I didn't consult, I didn't consult, I mean, the workers in city hall, these policies and procedures. I didn't go in there and tell them, is it okay if we make y'all verify these things?
You're their boss. You're not his boss.
I know I'm not. I'm not saying that.
I mean, that's all we're saying. He, he is a separate entity.
He shouldn't have been surprised. If, if there were some things in there that concern the police department, then they say, hey, can you stop out here? Let's...
Y'all, y'all are completely deflecting what this is about. That has nothing to do...
Have to make sure they have a check and balance with the monies that flow. But everything needs to flow in a proper, decent and in order way.
I, I don't know else how to explain it. Other than saying...
I'm going to ask one question. Deborah, you said what, you said a minute ago, the legislative auditor is the reason you want to put this in here?
That's a correct.
And what did the legislative auditor say needed to be in the policy and procedure? Did it need to be all of this or did this need to wait to, to audit the funds that were in there? Because we got a lot more than just fund audit.
I wish that they would give us a report, a policy written out so we wouldn't have had to have created it.
But I'm saying, there's really more in here than what he asked for, is it?
There's nothing that, I'd love to go back because it may be verbatim from what they gave us as far as a sample on the, um, the web, on the internet.
And you got to find out whether it's elected or a point.
It could be work or...
That's where we got to go find first because I think this is not elected.
This has, this has nothing to do with something with me ambushing the chief, okay? This is stuff, it has nothing to do with that.
Well, it's, it's a surprise. I, you know, to give him something and, and almost burn him on, say, look over this and we spot.
Alderman McCoy asked him to look over that. I didn't ask him. I mean, this wasn't...
I would have never known it.
My, my question is, um...
They don't know what's in his policies.
For, for Deborah, whatever they did send you saying, hey, look, this is what needs to be in place, I would like to see that versus from this that was created. Because that even goes back to page 20 on my thing with travel.
Yeah.
If that ain't what they suggested, then why are we implementing it?
It's just, they don't give you details. They just tell you what best practices are and they give you a list of things. And this is just where we put the information together into a policy.
Do you all send the money to him? I mean, like he, the money he gets from play parks comes to the city, right? And then it goes straight to him. I mean, you turn it loose for that one.
It goes to him directly. We don't give the money back.
No, he's not. He's not going to vote.
I mean, when you vote the play park the money, all they got is, hey, they're pushing the money to me. So y'all, you have some oversight. I don't think he's surprising anybody by questioning money. He's a citizen, that's my opinion.
He's surprised because he hasn't seen this. He's afraid that it's just a lie. But he can't be...
But nobody's doing anything wrong, so nobody's to be surprised.
Nobody's making acts of, this is...
Joey, I don't tell him he's doing nothing wrong, so.
And again, just like we discussed, we might change some of these things. Some of the things after we adopted, we look at it, he said, hey, look, this is something, then you amend it. Not surprising anybody. Might be, did I surprise our workers in, in the office when we started making them do these things? No, it's just, it's policies and procedures. And if it's some of the things that we adopt, this thing that needs changing or adopted or tweaked, then we'll do it. It's that simple. It's not...
Well, it's, it's not really that simple because we said the same thing when it came to the policy handbook for employees. And we made several suggestions that we said we will adopt it with these amendments. We have not seen hide nor hair of that thing ever since. So my fear is, we're going to say, let's adopt it with all of these amendments or we're going to adopt it with the ability to amend it in the future, and it's never allowed back on the agenda.
This isn't, it was supposed to be reviewed every year and ratified every year. So it will be looked at every year.
Well, we got to get it, you know...
Yeah, we got to start somewhere because there's not been one written policy on what we do here from any administration. So we're getting started doing the right thing. That's all.
I agree with Robert. I, I would like to see what was suggested. I, I think that's a great idea. I'd like to see what was suggested. I would like for the chief to be able to take a look at what's in here and implement what his policies are versus what are in here. Former judge and, and current counsel has, has pointed out one thing that definitely needs to be removed. Um, and I think that, that those things need to be taken into consideration before we take an action on something that we're adding as an ordinance knowing that there are issues with it. Because it's been pointed out by counsel. So I make the motion we table this until such time as it can be reviewed by all parties.
Well, can, can we finish the rest of your questions so we can, so we can do it all at one time instead of doing this two or three months down the road?
Absolutely.
Let's go with the rest of your questions. You got any other problems?
On 25, talks about the board is responsible for adopting budgets and amending budgets on a timely basis. And I believe that it should be added in there that, you know, the board of aldermen is responsible for reviewing the proposed budgets of the mayor and the chief, making changes to the budget as agreed upon by a majority of the members and adopting and amending budgets. Uh, the wording that is in here is saying, you know, we're supposed to adopt these budgets on a timely basis as they're presented. There is a certain process that comes along with amending budgets that allows for the board of aldermen to implement changes just as we're doing with this. We're going through it line by line and, and we would have the ability to say, I, you know, would approve this based on the following amendment. It is not a requirement directly of the board to just adopt a budget that's presented. And that is not clearly defined and reflected on page 25.
As you said with the other, what we do is look and see what the legislative auditor suggests.
This came verbatim from their, their budget policy.
Okay, verbatim from the legislative auditor. But we'll verify that.
Okay. Um, on 26, that was again to ensure the corrective action. We're talking about the mayors to administer and monitor the budgets, yada, 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 including any warnings of any corrective action needed. I don't believe that that has been done previously, and I do think that that is a great idea that, you know, when you're given the financial statements, warnings of, hey, we're getting close here.
Well, we did that. We did. We told you that along the way, every month, where we may be getting out or what we might need to amend, that kind of thing.
Where we might need to amend upwards because we were overspending, but there was no, we have, we see that we're overspending here and these are the corrective actions that has been taken. It's always been, we're going to need to amend this budget. And I'd like to include in those, we can either amend or we can take these corrective actions. There shouldn't always be an automatic amendment.
But we don't, we don't always know what they're going to be. There's no way we know.
Right. Um, and that was again where I said, to ensure corrective action be taken in a timely manner, they should be delivered for the month immediately preceding. We've already decided that we do not have the capability to, to do that. On page 26, where it talks about payroll and personnel policies, the very last paragraph, an employee handbook adopted by the board is available to all employees upon request. Do we have that? We have one that's in place with the changes and the amendments that we requested, the date that it was approved?
Yes, we did.
All of those changes have been made? Because last month, when I asked the same question, you said, no, it hasn't been done yet.
I don't remember that.
Okay. Just want to make sure that that was...
Did we even discuss the employee handbook last month?
It was brought up at some point.
I don't remember that. This...
But it is ready.
It's, it's happening. We've been, we've been going by it. We've been operating by it.
I've got one on this, on the same, oh, you may be going, I don't know, you would go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
Go ahead. On a 29...
Page 29?
Page 29, uh, this is something I think we've asked for way back, and I don't believe it's still in place because I asked one of the departments the other day about it, I think, in, uh, job descriptions. Um, we have not seen job descriptions on, that I know of. Have, have we got job descriptions on everybody, on every department?
Pretty much. You're welcome to come in and look at them.
That's what I'm saying, are they in place? Because somebody I asked the other day, they didn't seem to have, I can't remember which one it was, that they didn't seem to have everything in place. But I'll, I'll, if we're there, if you're saying they're in place, I can go look at them.
I'm saying we pretty much got, I mean, I think Lee and, and Mark and all of them pretty much have job descriptions. We have job descriptions ourselves. I mean, but you're welcome to come.
For all positions, okay. That's what, I just want to be sure they are in place because at one point we didn't have them, but they are now.
We, we...
I'm working, I don't know that everyone has them. I don't, but I do know that we've worked on them.
That's every position because it says, job descriptions are necessary for not some, but all positions.
Okay, and I'll just say this, the state has, for example, the state has things they call people laborers or workers or helpers. I mean, and there's job descriptions and there's pay frames for those different ones.
Right.
And it has, you know, they're pretty generic, but basically if it's a helper or a worker, I mean, it's pretty self-explanatory what they'll do there, the direction of what they're told to do. But you're welcome to come in and look and see what we got, see who we don't have, though.
And I'd like to know too, because I've heard complaints from departments, and any job description that I ever wrote, at the end of each job description is also, and I worked with a union, and all other duties as a sign. Because I'm hearing out of one department, they don't like doing what they like, are told to do after they get through doing something else. But yet, I hope all job descriptions at the end of them have an, an other duties as a sign. And every job description should be at the end of that. As a union, I had the opportunity at that point even to put that in. I hope we are at this point.
I hope that we would have department heads that are in place that I have confidence in that would write those employees up, they tell them how to do it.
I'm going to have to agree with you because I'm getting them same complaints as well.
I'm getting many of those complaints, so...
I think I brought it.
I'm just saying, I hope that that's nothing that's not in place because if I'm giving them money to work and I ask them to do something else, I don't expect them to write.
That falls on my responsibility, Alderman approach. And I promise you, if, if you'll point that out, who told you that, I, I promise you I'll address it.
Okay.
Okay. Deval?
On that same page, page 29, employee performance evaluation. It says, management has the authority to require annual employee performance. I believe that should be a requirement, not has the authority to require, but I believe that should be done annually. And not only to give appraisable, appraisals for basis of compensation, training, and disciplinary actions, but also to determine the return of investment on the employee. Um, and I believe that that should be something that is enacted, that is done annually. It is an annual requirement.
And I have asked about that to different departments too, and I don't think that's completely being done. So I would like to see that same institute in, because it's something that I'd had to do when I worked as a manager. I had to do performance evaluations on each employee annually. And that wasn't just to be able to determine if they were a good employee. I got feedback as to who I was to them. It gave me feedback as to what they expect from me. It's a time of communication between them and the supervisor where they can at least communicate. So I, I'll second that, that, that that needs to be annually and it needs to be reviewed by upper management beyond the supervisor or the department head. So I'd like to see that instituted too.
We're doing a lot of talking, but is anybody highlighting or writing?
I've got camera right there.
Can we expect that to happen?
I will investigate that as far as putting the total town under a, a official performance appraisal. The danger is that you have different people doing those appraisals, different department heads. And I just think that a lot of times you get, uh, I think their performance is done every day. You can see if they're not doing their job.
Well, that's, that, again, it's done every day, but it's also an annual thing that you should do and, and it should be documented because documentation is the key. That's the key. Because what happens is, is my, in my experience is, I've documented this guy doing good, good, good. Then he does bad, and guess what the union says? He's done good, good, good. So I'd be very aware of the fact of whoever my department head is, that he really evaluates him. He doesn't just say, he does good, he does good, he does good. And that's all, again, management, his responsibility.
Well, again, and that's, that's under my responsibility.
That's right.
And I, I will take that under advisement. But as far as that being a requirement to have an actual employee evaluation, uh, I've also been, I've worked around a lot of people for a lot of years. And I've also seen people who are evaluating people that didn't have the ability to do it. Or there could be people that have an axe to grind with some employee that's under them. And I, I don't think that would be the case, but it could be.
Would you call that a trust issue like with Joey? Because you, you're the one...
I'm just using an example.
The department head you're appointed by you, I would hope that would be somebody you could trust.
Alderman approach, I'm just using that as an example. I'm not saying that's the case.
Well, I'm just saying, but the way you stated it was that you don't have faith in your, you're going to axe to grind. I hope he's above that if he's a manager.
We have, we have procedures in place, just like Mark has. We've had employees that were either insubordinate or they did things that were wrong. They were wrote up for, and after they got to a certain point, upon the recommendation of those department heads, they come to me and say, we don't need him, he's not a productive employee, and we terminate him. And that's, to me, I think that's, uh, our, if they're doing a good job, you know, if there's something they've merit a raise or they reached some certain scales or reached some extra education or certifications that require a bump up or something like that, I look at it, we talk about it, we sit down and, and look at those things and do...
And that would all be in a performance evaluation. What have I accomplished this year? All those things are reviewed in a performance evaluation, documented and put in place year after year. It's just like the budget. You know, we don't need to come to the end and say, thus amended. No, we need to... No, we need to work on it.
Well, I also don't... You could, we can also red tape and legislate so much where we're doing paperwork instead of doing our work.
I think that's what a manager is. It's a lot of work to a manager, if he's a good man. I'll be honest with you.
I will take that under advisement. All right, who else?
Page 28, time cards. I would like to see the city go to a situation where there are no written time cards, all time cards for all employees citywide are stamped.
All right, I'll discuss that with department heads, and of course, there's, we're gonna have to buy a bunch of time clocks.
How many time cards do you have?
Little investment compared to what you can get out of them if you use them.
Well, again, I, I don't know how the time card situation's working with the other departments. How do y'all feel about them? Mark?
You like the punching time cards?
Hold up, hold up.
But can anybody punch another person?
Do they have access to it?
Right. If you, not supposed to, but can?
Can?
Because a lot of places make you use the telephone. Well, where I work, and I realized, you had to use a specific code that was only for you. Anybody can punch somebody.
We went to a elementary time card at the street department for about a year and a half, and it was way more trouble than it worked at the county electricity. Goes back to the old, it works way better.
Are there cameras or anything around the time cards that...
No, not, we, we had an issue of not getting, getting service in that 10 building.
Yeah.
How do you go 10-8 often?
Yeah, I go 10-8 from my house, you know, at the time I'm supposed to be at work. I took that unit right up to 10-8, I'm at work. There may be a call in the world, there may be a traffic accident, and I head straight to that. I'm not coming to the building and checking in. Police department, I don't go up that much.
Yeah, please understand that, in, in my thought process, this applies to the town and not the police department. I consider them two separate entities.
Right.
Fire, too. We need to there, and their airbags are already over the trucks that are there.
And how do they go 10-8?
Whenever they arrive on the scene, they say they're there. And they're, they're reporting to the IC, you know, that's there, it's in charge of the scene, they're on here, what you need to do, and that's where he's there.
So y'all have, for lack of better terms, y'all have a verbal time card, where you have a dispatcher that they call into?
They can, that's how it's taken care of.
Right.
If they had to punch in, then they'd have to come back and...
Right. But you don't have them, they don't get into their truck and write down, I got to work. That's what I'm talking about, when I said, no written time cards. If you have a method in place where they radio in, and y'all, your dispatcher recognizes his voice, and it's not, you know, Tron calling in for, for, you know, Tommy, you know what I mean? That's not a written time card. But there are places, and there are departments within the town, where people are writing in time. And that's what I'm talking about. Those are not written times. Those are called in, so it's like a, a voice time card, if you will, for lack of a better term.
It's not a voice time card, it is a written time card.
But they're calling in for... Do I know?
They're emergency responders.
Exactly, and they're calling in, and someone is verifying that they're 10-8.
We do it two, two different ways. When we do it that way, or we show up to the fire station, nine times out of 10, the guys that are on duty, the other guys show up 15, 20 minutes early.
Okay.
You know, so that they can swap out, so the guys that are there on duty already, they can get their gear off the truck.
Mm-hmm.
The new guys can put their gear on the truck, make the exchange of what happened, what's...
Still, you still are gonna have to have manual time cards.
Craig, how much information do you give when you go 10-8?
I give my time that I go 10-8 to the dispatcher log, my time down there, my mileage.
And you have to give your code, right?
Yeah, 112, I'll be 12, PD, I'll 10-8, mileage.
There you go.
Still gonna have to do time cards, manual time cards.
Where are you gonna have to do them at?
And another thing, like, at the end of the shift, they were on the call, and the day shift going home, night shift coming out, they'll come out to the call, take it over, and that shift will go on straight home.
Yeah. Let me reword. Is there any non-emergency personnel within the town of Adelia who writes in time on a time card?
There you go.
Non-emergency personnel. Okay. Those are the ones that I'm talking about.
Okay.
Is, is just what I believe. I, I, I think that we should have, for non-emergency personnel, time clocks.
Is, is this a trust issue?
It is a trust issue, yes. The mayor has, in the past, disclosed where, situations where time cards were manipulated.
Now, if we have a...
Whoa, 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 I would like clarification on that. On who, on which, I mean, you're talking about as far as time, actual time? No, that, that was dealing with overtime, and how they was calculating. No, I stopped that. That's what, that's my only problem I had with the time cards.
Yeah.
You know, it's how they were accounting for their vacation time, counting that as a, as a, as a day worked. And if they, they worked, they took two days of vacation and worked three, they counted eight days as time worked, and then they, if they worked that weekend, they get overtime. No, we stopped all that. Now, that's the only issues I've had with the time card. As far as anybody manipulating time cards and time, they better not be.
Well, this is, this is my whole take on it. Trust, no. Everybody the same, yes. And that's the way it needs to be across the board. Everybody needs to be punching a time clock if anybody else is. So it should need to be equal across the board, punch a time clock, everybody gets it done that way. It's electronically issued, entered in there, it's accurate, and it's there.
Non-emergency personnel.
Except, yeah.
Yeah, because they, they are, they are in a different situation. And again, there always are different things for different departments like them. Now, that's, that's the only way I see it. Otherwise, somebody else is reporting to a building.
Once again, I will, I will sit down, I'll talk to those that's gonna affect. For example, Bobby calls here tonight, and he's on salary. You know, are you, is he required to punch a time clock?
Salary, I don't think they need to.
Exactly.
Example, employees on salary, I, they don't have to punch a time clock, they're a salary person.
You don't, you don't...
I wouldn't think that a salary person...
But as employees...
Does he fill out a time card now?
Huh?
Does he fill out a time card?
He fills out a time card. Because what it does, it keeps up with their hours of service, so five years down the road, he has his hours of service, how much time he gonna get for vacation, how much he gets for sick time, all this other thing.
So...
So it is, it is a tracking method of keeping up, and also for Jay to do payroll.
So if he does, he still could just punch a time clock.
Also, if he took a week's vac, I mean, those time cards identify if they were out for a vacation, or if they were out two days sick. Those things identify.
I had to punch one, I was a supervisor, I punched it.
The, the, it's, the, written in time cards do more than just, now, if, again, if there's somebody manipulating and stealing time, I hope I find out about it, because they will be terminated if there's somebody manipulating somebody's time card. So, I think...
But regardless too, when you're set salary, from experience, regardless, if he punch in at 8:05, and he's 15, 20 minutes, an hour late, his pay is still gonna be the same when you set salary. That's the benefit of being a set salary employee. Regardless to whatever time they punch in, their check, every two weeks is still gonna be the same.
Right.
Every day, I work 16 hours, but I got paid for eight, so, you know, it's all about management.
But your salary workers also get comp time for, in place of, in lieu of overtime, is that correct?
No.
You're talking about salary employees, they get comp time?
No.
We have been doing comp time.
Okay.
I would hope not.
When we're talking about supervisor approval is necessary on the time cards, overtime must be approved by the supervisor, who's approving supervisor overtime?
I guess they would do theirselves if they do it. Okay, if Mark gets called out in the middle of the night, I mean, do I need to, does he need to call me and say, Buzz, can I go out and do this, that this, a matter of getting our power back on or something like that? I, I don't understand that, I mean...
But they've not misused any, they've not mis... Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
I don't, I don't see, I don't see where that's been abused.
The approval point comes after the say.
A supervisor's salary or hourly?
Pardon?
A supervisor's salary or hourly?
Their salary.
Though...
No, not all.
No, neither.
We are working to get them all salary.
Mark is, Mark's on salary now. Lee, we're working on trying to work Lee's out, because there's more involved with Lee. Lee is also the only one certified.
You're on salary?
I thought you were started, you'd started on that. Okay, well, that's my bad, and I, I thought you were.
And as far as Mark is concerned, when his guys, when his guys go out for those, those calls, most of their traffic goes through the PD too, Craig.
Oh, okay.
The police department actually clocks their, gets their movement too, when that happens.
The only time we come out of the street department for overtime, is to call through the police department. And we also know on the back of our time chief, whenever I come out for overtime, or wherever any of my employees come out for overtime, we know Jay's on the back of their time chief, and just turn it to Jay, and Jay will give it to the mayor. If you have any questions on that over there.
Any other questions? Let's move on. We're almost done, y'all. We're getting to the end of it here.
Just on page 32, there's some spelling errors you might need to...
32?
Yeah, page 32, you might need to run a spell check on that page. There's quite a few of them. That's all I got. Everybody clap.
Anybody else?
I guess, I guess I might be remiss to say, but I'm thinking now, back to what we just discussed about the, um, department supervisors and managers. I would think that the approval for them would go maybe to be of being the city manager, and then, second, with the mayor.
That, Jay, when he brings us, when we go to checks, he, most time, we, we discuss any, any of the overtime at that point. Also, they're very good about giving me their detailed reports on things that they've done. I'd be glad to share it with anybody. Mark here brings a report in, it's several pages thick of everything they did, documented, very, 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 very detailed of the work they do. And, look, we are very blessed to have the guys working. We have department heads and employees that we've got. And I'm just thankful for them. Now, back to Alderman McCoy's motion to, or whoever it was, now we can address that since we...
There's a motion on the tape, there's a motion made to table this until such time as the police chief can review the portion that pertains to him. Ms. Deborah can review whether the information copied was pertaining to elected or an appointed chief, and all of the other recommendations that were made.
I second that.
Okay, second, do I hear a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You oppose? Okay, number seven, Lee, you wanna talk about the garbage truck?
We just, about two months ago, we had a new garbage truck in. The other garbage trucks want to roll off in, comes off in January, so we have to bid this out, so we'll be ready for January. Every two years.
Okay, any questions?
One thing I'd like to see started, whenever we do these...
Pardon?
One of the things that I'd like to see started whenever we do these is an actual presentation. A presentation of, you know, what are we requesting, what's the anticipated cost, what, you know, what's the difference between, the cost differential between lease and the benefits therein, purchase, the benefits therein, new, used, a presentation of what you're requesting the tax dollars be spent on. And I understand that the bidding process is a part of that. You don't know exactly what that's gonna be until you set those bids out. I completely understand that. But one of the things that's lacking as far as knowledge and information that we get is, you know, what you're making model, are you, are you losing, is rolling off. How much has been spent for the repair of it? How much of that expense was covered under warranty, how much was not? How much was sent out to outside repair, and how much of that repair was handled in-house with our in-house mechanics? Just a financial overview of what we had and what it cost us, and perhaps some options for the board to consider, other than just a renewal of, or not a renewal of, or creation of another lease. What's the benefit? What's the cost benefit to the town? Because at this time, we are kinda tasked with starting to try to trim some of that off, some of the expenses off, as recommended by the person who did the rate study. And so I think at this time, it would be beneficial to the taxpayers, the board, and, and the town itself, to do just a little bit more research when promising out these high-dollar amounts.
Okay, this, again, this isn't a promise, this is just a request to submit, to receive bids. It's sitting, we'll have three or four months to have those discussions, we'll be glad to do that.
So can you get all that together, Lee? Because I, how much did you actually have to spend on that truck before you turn it back in? What all, that last one you turned in? What all did you have to do to that truck? And what is covered and all?
We had to replace the windshield, we had to replace all the brakes, and all the brake pads, all the brake, uh, discs on it. Uh, we had to replace about half, like a quarter of the tires for the helmet.
How much money did we actually spend just to get it ready to go back?
Probably a quarter thousand or... And that's, that's in our contract that we, that we do normally get that truck.
That's on a yearly lease, is you got, any kind of damages you would have to compensate for when you turn it in.
That's, that's not murder, you know, I tell you that.
Well, can you get a presentation together before we do this one, just to give us some idea?
I don't, I don't think you all have been a part of, but what happens is that, he rolls up, he, he gives you the actual, what we're getting. Was, and it's more advanced than the one we had last time.
Right.
It's got a better this, and a better that, and it's gonna last a little longer, and you get like a, a trifold little presentation on it, and he'll talk about it. We, that, he, he does do that with the, the purchase of the garbage truck.
And we'll discuss the third, the third truck we have, in case one of those do have to go in for warranty work, we have a backup. And you got two, two, I promise you, you let one of those trucks go down, you don't have one running behind it, or you... It's gonna get ugly quick.
But as far as the, the actual lease, what all is it covering is another thing. What, what do you have that you don't get covered?
Two years, so it's gonna be under warranty most of it.
Most everything?
Not, not everything.